Here we go, kids.
Okay, everyone. We are on. And I would like to open this evening's Georgetown Planning Board meeting for December 2nd, 3:04, 7:00 p.m., pending approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of October 28, 2015, and November 18, 2015.
Second.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the minutes of October 28 and November 18 of 2015, and discussion? No discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Ananmous, one absent. Any comments?
Three items under correspondence. T.J. O'Grady Associates has issued their first review report of the special permit application of healthy farms. The town of Georgetown, the Water Department issued their first review on healthy farms. And the town of Georgetown gave notice for the November 30th meeting, Parcel Act. And we can bring up Parcel Act later on in agenda.
Quick question about number two there. Was that the original one that was sent in from the Water Department?
Yes. There hasn't been a second one.
Okay.
So we got it again because we're gonna close the healthy farms hearing and then reopen it?
Did you receive the...
Prior to this?
Prior to this?
Yeah. Probably a week or so before. The first time we opened the healthy farms.
Okay. It's the same one?
That's what I... It looked the same. I wasn't really sure.
He basically looked at the new application, the old application.
Which was identical to the old application and he...
Reissued the letter.
Okay.
Gotcha. Seeing no vouchers, we're gonna move on to... We have two A&Rs there. 10 Street, 50 Woodland Road, and 10...
The planning office received an A&R application for lot line adjustments for a... For property of 50 10 Street and Woodland Road. To help discuss. Do you wanna come up, Jonathan?
Sure.
Good evening.
Hi.
This is just an adjustment where the driveway for decades has been going across ages property. So we're both getting older and we thought we'd straighten it out. So we walked the line, and this is what we agreed to do. Just move it over, same line, straight back.
So you're trying to actually own your driveway?
Yeah.
Crazy idea. Is Paige here? Is Paige here?
No. It's been that way for decades.
Yeah.
Do we need to know that he's okay with this?
Both owners sign the form A.
They will, both. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to endorse the plan of land in Georgetown, Mass. Donovan Survey Incorporated dated 10/9/15, signed by Paul Donovan. Donovan. And to authorize any endorsements which may be necessary for the form A.
Yeah, you got it. Yeah.
It's pretty standard fare.
Yeah.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, so a motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the A&R plan of land in Georgetown, Mass. Property of Paul Page, A&R Donovan Survey, 50 10 Street and 10 Woodland Road for the block. Any discussion?
Just to clarify, the endorsement is represented with signatures to the MyR as well as the Form B that I'll be handing over.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And one absent. Ananmous, one absent.
I do notice that it's got Tim Howard's name on here instead of mine. Should I just cross it out and...
Yeah.
And it doesn't list me as the vice chair, right?
It does.
Oh, okay. We're gonna have to sign that later.
The Form B?
Yeah, that's wrong.
Sorry, I'll reissue that, but I'll just leave it in.
Just the clerk should've found that. Is that... What did you say?
I'm just saying I get... I need to reissue that.
It's just the Form Bs like filled out wrong. It's old.
I just edited it out.
It's an old document.
It's an old Form B.
Yeah.
Hardly ever gets used. So what I'll do, since you authorized approval, I'll just put it out when the packets go out the end of the week.
Maybe they just assigned that so they can record it.
All right. Thank you. So we'll sign that at the end of the meeting?
Yeah. I'll have it in the office tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Planning Office received an A&R application for a lot line adjustment regarding two properties off of Lisa Lane. Melissa, 28, in the spirit of the board understand the requirement for this.
You know, we just told this gentleman to go home and come back tomorrow. He seemed pretty poor, almost. They were trying real quick. I believe they haven't. They could afford them.
I'll sign them at the end of the meeting.
Good evening. Melissa, Lisa Ongden from Man in Man, here for Turning Leaf. And I'm here to discuss that you sign an A&R plan for a line adjustment for lot 21 of the Turning Leaf subdivision. And that parcel that's going to be split off will be conveyed to lot 20. And there's no...
To which lot?
Lot 20, which is the one that Jason's... Actually, it's hard to read that it's lot 20, but it's in the remarks. That lot had already been conveyed out.
And it's my understanding that the reason for the 668 square foot adjustment is that the driveway on lot 20 needed to be installed in a certain location due to grades?
Yes.
And that's the reason why simple review of the A&R? Anyone move that?
Lot line, a little bit.
Was it a grading issue? Really?
Rather than granite easement, it was easier to convey the parcel. So that's cleaner.
Going on as always? Did you have any questions?
I was just gonna read the motion.
I have several that I was... Following the law. One was that Davenport didn't sign the application.
No, because we're actually... We are conveying it from lot 21. It's lot 21 that's being divided.
Yes, but they're going to get the section, you're changing their lot line as well.
Yeah, it's a conveyance. They've agreed to it.
Well, we need something in writing. We need on the application. I would not approve something changing somebody's line without signature of the owner.
We haven't changed it yet. It's not been conveyed, so I mean if they...
You need this to convey it, don't you?
Yeah, we do. We need this to convey it, yeah.
You're not taking land away from them.
No, we're not taking land away from them, so permission isn't required.
I, for one, would not sign it.
Permission is not required to change a lot line, even if you're giving them...
We're giving them the lot.
Understand. Where is permission not required?
Their lot's not currently changed. They own 20. That's not being changed.
You're asking for it to be changed now, right?
No, just 21.
Well, how is...
You're creating a 21B.
Yeah, we're creating 21B.
So the only person whose lot is affected is the owner of lot 21A.
Oh, okay.
And the owner of 21A is?
Turning Leaf.
Oh, and Turning Leaf is making this conveyance? You wanna read it?
So you're going to sell them another lot for 668 square...
Yeah, we're gonna give it to them.
It's not becoming part of lot 20. It's...
They're creating a new third lot and then adding that to 21A.
To affect their driveway, so that their driveway can be installed.
I've never seen it done like this. I don't know about you, Harry. I've never seen it like this.
It probably has to be done this way because the electric company screwed up when they put the utility in.
But he's saying... She's saying gravel. I mean, that's a little different than utility. You're saying the grading rather.
No one wants to blame them. It's sort of like, what was it? What was the end of that long road there? When we did the three lot extension on...
Stone Road.
Stone Road, yeah. Yeah, same thing, over again, yeah. See a pattern emerging?
You had some other questions?
Well, I had a lot followed through. You know, you just said, like I was looking, based on what I was reading, that you need a performance guarantee of the road. Are you affecting the road at all?
No.
And then it is a question about covenant?
It would stay. Lot 21 effectively becomes 21A and 21B, and there's still covenant, and we wouldn't convey... We can't convey it until the covenant's released. This is just the first step in that process?
So according to the... And that's the other thing, one more. According to the decision, any changes was just going to be clarified as a modification of the subdivision. Not coming in for an A&R for change in lots.
It's just a minor change that falls under the application... The approval not required part of the subdivision regulations.
But the board has to make that determination, as I understood the bylaw, that whether it's... First off, is it minor or major? And then, secondly, that they had to do a modification if it was major. But I've never seen it come in like this, you know? I just... I just wonder if this is okay, 'cause it's so strange.
This is an acceptable and legal way to do it. We've already said that this is a way that meets all of the conditions under A&R because we've released lots on it.
Yeah.
We've released the...
We haven't leased 21. We've leased 20.
No, we've released 20.
Yeah.
So we've already said that that roadway, that way is adequate.
Yeah. Just the signature, you know, just the signature of Ms. Davenport here. I want them to know what's going on, and I'd like to see it on file, you know, that this is agreeable to them. And that's the main reason for... I mean, the application came in and there was no explanation. Well, the application that was submitted, if I can find the thing, it says between lot 21 and 21A. I mean, it clearly lists both lots.
It's describing it.
Do you have a copy of the application? And then there's nothing else circled for about four or five.
Let me just ask for clarification.
Sure.
So graphically, you have this thin line and then you have this dark line.
Yep.
I'm reading this to mean that the thin line is what is the existing property line.
That is correct.
And that line is staying.
Yes.
And you're creating this new line.
Correct.
And this becomes another parcel per se.
It does, yes.
And then this is going to be deeded over to them?
21B would actually... The intent is to deed it to lot 20.
Okay.
Yes. And it's to accommodate their driveway, and this is, rather than granite easement, it's a cleaner way is to do it this way.
Okay. So...
The application is for lot 21A or lot Lisa Lane 25. There's no lot line adjustment to lot 20.
Yeah, she did list both of these lots, 25 and 21A, right? When she filled out the application, is that what you read?
It was descriptive.
It's 25 Lisa Lane. Undesign wishes to record that company plan requested determination endorsement by said board that approval by it under subdivision control law is not required for property located at 25 Lisa Lane.
I think the crux of it, if I may, Mr. Chairman? I think the crux of it, Tilly, is does adding a 12-foot wide piece of land there so that the guy can have a driveway constitute something which would trigger a formal subdivision application modification? And A&R, Form A lots, the mechanism being brought in here is perfectly adequate for that. This will be recorded at the registry of deeds.
Okay.
Assuming it gets our endorsement, it would be recorded at the registry of deeds. And then it would be identifiable on a deed that you'd watch it and say...
Okay. All right. And you're taking six... In other words, 668 square feet away from 21A of, which is 40,000... 22 square feet, which would make this an unconforming lot.
It's an acre lot.
Yep.
It's what?
It's an acre lot.
The 40,000 is what it would be after the 668,000 square feet is deducted.
Yes, correct.
Yeah. So it's not 40...
After the fact?
Yeah, it's not 40,022 minus 668. It's 40,022 after the 668 has already been deducted.
I got you.
Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's correct. And it... Minimum lot area is 40,000.
It's showing after endorsement what the parcels would be.
I think, Tilly, I don't know if this helps you or not, but in the whole scheme of things, it seems like a reasonable fix to a problem that was created. It seems like a reasonable fix in the whole scheme of things in life and process and getting it right.
So when in fact they passed the deed for 21B to Davenport, then what? Are we gonna be notified that this is gonna be final, or is this the end of it?
Are we gonna be notified of a sale of...
That their lot is gonna change?
This is the end.
This would be the end.
This is the end?
No, I would disagree. Before they can convey something which occurred, which we as a planning board and a town have covenant on 21A, any of the children of 21A would need to be released from covenant as well.
Oh, well, that's part of that process, which it always comes back during that.
Yeah, release covenant.
Right. Which it always comes back at that point.
Okay.
As you know, will require the full-blown charity, tripartite, which our understanding is that that's already in the works.
That is correct.
No more drawings and changes.
But this is step one.
Yeah.
You have to have this to refer to, so that they can write up a deed that...
References.
Yeah.
All right, so this is required. Let me write that note down, 'cause I didn't see that in the bylaw.
Did you have anything else, Tilly?
Oh, that's about it.
Okay. I just... Can you explain to me, just my own curiosity, so what created the need for this?
The need to move the driveway for lot 20, for the owners of lot 20.
And why did the driveway need to get moved?
I believe there was a... There was an issue regarding utilities, number one, and there was also an order. They were... When they were installing it, it was encroaching onto lot 21.
And who's responsible for making sure that the house and the work that takes place on a lot like this conforms to what's been approved?
Whoever's following the plans to build the house. We sold the raw piece of property. I mean, presumably it was marked, but...
Have you read our decision?
I have.
And you're not remembering the section that says that all utilities must be placed? And it's the responsibility of the developer to ensure that they're placed?
There was a dispute on whether or not where...
I guess I... This is just for myself. I just wanna be really clear here.
Yeah.
You guys have created a problem that didn't have to happen. And I think the board is gonna do the right thing and take care of this, but I just wanted to say that. Does anybody else have any? Get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to endorse the lot line adjustment represented in the Form A, application for endorsement of plan not to require approval dated November 24, 2015 for the property of 25 Lisa Lane, and to represent the endorsement with signatures to the plan of land in Georgetown, Mass. prepared by William and Sprague, dated November 16, 2015, for Turning Leaf Georgetown LLC with a signature to Form B determination that subdivision not required outside application.
December 18, you said?
I read from...
Excuse me. What was it? Would you repeat?
Dated November 16, 2015.
November 18, 2015.
I read from...
November 18, 2015.
November 18, okay.
Gotcha. I'll second that. I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so there's been a motion, and it has been seconded to approve the lot line adjustment represented in Form A application for endorsement of plan not to require approval dated November 18, 2015, of the 25 Lisa Lane. No more discussion? No more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
One absent.
The Form B has the same issue on this one as it was on the other.
Just wanted to bring up correspondence from the Conservation Commission. The Open Space Estates... Conservation Commission has voted to lock down the Open Space Plan and to send it off to the state for final approval. Mostly done by the Open Space Committee, this plan has been through a public survey, a public visioning meeting, and almost three years of compiling feedback from residents and town boards. We're in the final stages of putting together the maps and support letters, and we already have letters of support from MVPC and Essex Green Belt. The Conservation Commission is looking for a letter of support from the planning board regarding the Open Space and Recreation Plan. Now, as I understand it, the PDF that was sent out did not have included in it the Open Space and Rec Plan in electronic format, so apologies for that. Of the members here tonight, who would like to have a hard copy and who would like to have...
How many pages is it?
92, without maps.
I'm happy with the PDF.
Oh, I'd rather have the hard copy.
I prefer to see it posted online on the town website. So that, you know, like people could actually comment on it, even though, you know, they weren't on planning board.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Yeah. Speaking of the...
When I was on the ConCon, that's how we did it. We put a copy in the library for... With full maps and everything.
Right, that's right.
Yeah, but somehow we've... That's... That didn't occur this time.
So...
I'm sure it was an oversight.
So we will get that and with regards to the letter request from Steve, we can bring that up at the next meeting?
Yeah.
And how many hard copies you gonna have, Howard?
What do you mean?
I'd like a hard copy.
Yeah, two. One for you and one for two.
That would be great. If it's posted online, I mean, that would be great. Oh, black and white's fine.
Is it gonna be inclusive of the maps?
Yeah, inclusive of the map.
Oh, then, yeah, do the full-blown, yeah. Why don't we just do like a dozen copies at Staples and distribute them throughout the town? Couple with the library, up and downstairs, and the town clerk's office. That way, people that are interested could go pick them up.
Unless Steve's already done it.
The plan for the next seven years of all the passive and active recreation of the town.
I think it's a good idea to have the plans, Harry, but I think I would like to wait till people make requests for them before we just start dropping them off in different places, 'cause oftentimes what happens with those reports is they just... They go somewhere and they get put on a shelf, or they get lost, or they get misplaced. It'd be great if, when someone asks, we can start handing... We could start handing that out. Would that work?
Whatever you think.
There is an expense with the colored maps, but the hard copy document can have an insert stating these are on maps or on file in the planning office or something, but...
Again, if it was online, people could refer to the...
I'd much rather do it on the apps.
I think online is the way to do it.
Sure.
And make sure that it's clear to everyone that the information is there and they just have to go look at it.
People might find some factual errors.
Yep.
Footage mistakes, format mistakes, and stuff like that.
So...
And just...
It takes care of that.
For reference, before we move into the planning office...
Do we have anything about public hearings?
Yeah. A public hearing on 210 Street was noticed in the paper and a notice was mailed to a Butters for a meeting tonight, but the agenda that was officially posted did not have the public hearing. So what needs to be done is the public hearing, because it was noticed for tonight, needs to be opened and then continued to the night, when it would then be placed on the agenda.
Does it have... Is the ninth okay?
Yeah, I've talked to legal counsel about it.
So based on, you know, he's had...
Did you get that in writing?
No. I can't, no.
Put it in the file.
Yeah.
Cover your... Cover all the bases.
Keep a legal file so we can refer to it in the future.
Wow. Prior to anyone opening this hearing, Mr. Chairman, I would have to... I'd like to make an announcement. I will be recusing from 210 Street. As you may know, it was owned by Dorothy Blanchard and Charles Blanchard. Dorothy recently passed away. Charles passed away a few years ago. I was mentioned in Dorothy's will. Even though there really isn't a conflict of interest, some folks might reasonably think that there would be.
That's the way to do it, Harry?
Yeah. So I'll be recusing from that, and the only thing I ask is if you open the hearing and you continue the hearing, that when you continue it, continue it to the end of the night, after all we do, after we do all our business?
Right.
Because I will be leaving the room and, well, you go looking for me, but I might lose interest and go home.
You'll have a cigarette.
I might just get in the car and go home.
Howard, in terms of just to open the meeting, what's the project called?
It's 10 Street, the preliminary subdivision plan for 210 Street.
210 Street.
And I have a public hearing notice I can read.
Okay. Do you wanna...
Is that a lane or a court?
He filed as a preliminary subdivision plan, but it's a three-lot subdivision. So that's up for discussion also.
So it's not a court? It's not a lane? It's not a special permit? You only need three? You're already down two? Go ahead.
Okay.
Just a question.
So I'd like to open up the meeting. We have 210 Street preliminary subdivision plan. We have a motion for that? Do we need a motion?
So...
In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81, and Town of Georgetown subdivision regulations, Chapter 365, the Georgetown Planning Board will hold a public hearing on December 2nd, 2015, at 7:15 in the Third Floor Meeting Room at Georgetown Memorial Town Hall, 1 Library Street on the application submitted by Steve Franciosa of 8 Newell Road, West Newbury, 01985, for approval of a preliminary subdivision plan regarding property described as 210 Street in Georgetown, Massachusetts, 01833. The preliminary subdivision plan consists of one existing lot and three proposed lots and 5.21 acres within the residential... The preliminary subdivision plan consists of one existing lot and three proposed lots and five point two one acres within the residential BRB zone district and described as accessories map ten, lot fifteen. Copy of the application and plan is on file in the Georgetown Planning Office. This was published in the Georgetown Record, November thirteenth, November twentieth, two thousand fifteen, with the notice being mailed out to a Butters on November first, I believe.
And when, and when did you get that application? I think.
November twelfth. It, it got mailed out, uh, it was recorded in, with the town work, November twelfth.
The twelfth.
And notifications was mailed out, uh, the end of November, I'm sorry, the twenty-third.
So for those who are.
Mr. Chairman, is the hearing open?
Uh, the hearing is open.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to note for the record that Harry Lockatilia recuses from this hearing and leaves the room, thank you.
So noted. For those who are here for that meeting, I apologize for the mistake on our end with the coordinating of this, so if you were here for that, I'm sorry, you'll have to come back again.
You know, the rain.
Yeah, ju- just to clarify, it was, it was noticed in the paper and I'm assuming you're at Butters, so you received the notice. The problem is, is that the agenda that was posted outside of Town Hall and online did not have the public hearing notice. So.
Technically, we can't.
Technically, we need to open it and it just gets continued, we're not gonna take him in the new testimony. So, if you come on the night, you'll be starting the public hearing process from the start. Uh, we will probably send out a cursory notice, but it will be posted online.
And, and so we're looking for a motion to continue this to the ninth, you say?
December ninth.
December ninth, so you're getting that information now, so do I have a motion, sir, continuing?
Motion to continually meeting until, uh, December ninth.
At sub fifteen.
At seven fifteen.
Tilly, second?
Second.
So, motion has been made and it's been seconded to continue two Tenny Street preliminary subdivision plan to the December ninth, uh, planning board meeting. Um, any discussion, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Is Harry coming back?
I don't know.
Stuff is still here, sorry.
That's a good way to know. One of the applications had November twenty-third line, I thought it was that.
Sure, he's probably having a.
Or October, October or something, did I see, was it this one?
We should, um, we'll just, we'll take a five minute. Five minute recess, okay?
Well.
So they ended up getting Stephen Flynn, I was talking to Stephen Flynn, he's like, what tree was it?
I'm glad you did that because at the select meeting we were at, later on, they they gave their new, at the end of the year, liquor licenses out, and the spot was right there, and I wondered, geez, I wonder if we could have put a little note into this.
Well.
Okay, we're on, we're on.
What did I miss? I, under planning office, the, in brief, there's two items, the first one is, the street acceptance for Marine Lane, I have contacted Larry Graham, and he and I will be coordinating a site walk, uh, next week, to go out and take a look at Marine Lane, and also allow him time to access our file.
What's that day, oh, you're doing it during the day?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so it's not an actual site walk, did we?
No, he, he, he's gonna be doing the, the review of the street acceptance plan and, and make sure everything's up to snuff. And then what was the other?
You had Board of Selectmen joint meeting?
Right, there's a joint meeting of the Planning Board with the Board of Selectmen regarding parcel F, and I was unable to attend.
One last night or two nights ago?
Two nights ago, so I didn't know if, uh, any of the Planning Board members that did attend wanted to, to give a brief, uh, description of what happened and.
Without going through it all, it was a two hour meeting, um, the punchline, as far as I understand it, and Harry can correct me if I'm wrong, was that, um, uh, S- uh, S- Steve Conservation Commission, um, Jimmy, uh, from Park and Rec, and myself from Planning Board, and yourself, to make sure we get things correct, we're going to basically take the motion that the Planning Board had previously approved in that three to two vote that we took, and basically elaborate further on it as a standalone piece of information explaining better for the Selectmen to understand, I think, uh, what you can and can't do there.
I, 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 with the, um, with the addition of, it was the three chairs, I thought.
Yep.
Rob.
Yep.
Jimmy DeBento from Park and Rec.
Yep.
And Carl Schrader from Concom. Um, not that Steve Prasimsky or you were excluded.
Carl, yeah.
That was my understanding.
Yeah, maybe, okay, um, I'm not, I'm not sure, I thought it was Steve, but maybe. I, whoever it is, it was one of the representatives in Conservation Commission, and, and Howard wasn't mentioned, but, um, I, I, after, uh, when talking, the following day, filling Howard in on what went on, I just want someone there to make sure that we don't screw up what we've already done, you know, the legalese part of making sure we're following our own ordinance is correct, um, so.
Okay, I think there was a, what the Planning Board approved for a motion, I, I dissented, but what, what you guys approved, spoke about an easement, and, um, I, I, the, the, I, I don't believe legally that the town can grant an easement to itself. I think that's all merger of interests, and I, I don't think it can do that. Uh, so you might need a legal opinion on that, or you might need to tweak something and come up to, come up with some kind of solution.
So that's why, that's why he's gonna be there.
The town doesn't lose, no matter what, there isn't gonna be a fifteen lot subdivision there, it's protected land, the town has it, it's safe from development, that's all that counts.
So, um, so that was how the meeting went. Um, and, uh, I guess that would be that, and then, uh, moving on to members or, was there anything else?
Yeah, there was more to that, excuse me, hold on a second. The Selectmen made a suggestion at the end of that session, um, that they wanted a report, someone from the Board to come to their meetings and give them an update of what we're doing, and why we're doing it, they wanna.
What I took, what I took that, they, 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 what I took that to mean was that they were thinking it would help them understand if there was a representative from all of the Boards, not just Planning Board, but all of the Boards, to go to them once every four months, and, and it wasn't cast in stone or anything, but to update them on what was going on with the Boards, so that they would be better prepared to understand issues when they show up before them, um. What, since you brought that up, what I, what I, what I, I, I had to chuckle to myself when they brought that up, because literally just before that, um, I had put on the table that, you know, unless we, and I, I spoke to the people in the audience, uh, the public, as well as the Selectmen, but I said, you know, this is a leadership issue, and the public, it's up to all of us to get involved, but none of this is going to change, uh, unless we take a look at our form of town government, and, um, it's something that we need to talk about, and it's something, we have numerous reports, they're all saying the same thing. Mentioned the last study from the D O R in two thousand thirteen, very clearly spelling it out, what we needed to do as a town with the form of town government, and the response was that, which was exactly a continuation of what we have in place, asking volunteers to spend more time trying to coordinate disparate groups.
Ironically enough, I remember years ago when I was the Chair of the Board, and Nick Cracknell was the, the Town Planner. Once a month, Nick would issue a report to the Select Board, he gave them a synopsis of what the Planning Board was doing, what the Z B A was doing, what the Concom was doing, what the Water Department, I mean, it was a complete, total, one or three-page document that just got submitted to the Board of Selectmen, and by reading that, they knew everything that was going down in this building and the others, and that was a lot of, that, that was something that Nick couldn't help but do, because he saw the interconnectedness of all of the Boards, and he needed to know what was going on, so that probably he could sleep at night. But, um, ironically enough, that was something that was done, and, and I'm sure it took a lot of time for him to do. Uh, but that's something that was done by.
Something we can explore getting back into, but just, just, whenever the Planning Board gets, um, an application in, the application is always copied to the Board of Selectmen, and when the Planning Board undertakes, in type of zoning amendment, the, I write a letter and they, they get notice that we're undertaking these things, so they, they're, they're receiving some information, but how it's woven together.
Yeah.
If that's what they're looking for, then, then that's something that certainly can, can, can benefit, and it, it could go beyond, um, the Board of Selectmen too, it could just be a general post of information that the public could access and things like that, so.
Or, or we could just give them their minutes, you know, if they wanted to read them, you know.
Minutes are available online.
I think what they're looking for, and, and I, I mean, I can appreciate it, but I think, I think, I think what they're looking for is the problem that the town has, in that there is no one group that has a pulse on it all, that's pulling it all together.
Yeah.
And that is their attempt, and Nick's attempt working with them in the past, to try to bridge that gap with the way our town government is set up today.
Right, that was, that was his goal, I, I agree with that a hundred percent, that's when he did the development pamphlet.
Right.
The forty-three D to try to, you know, cause you're limited on a shorter time, that was the goal, that he was going to be the one, to be, uh, you know, he was the resource.
He was on the Economic Development Committee.
Right, and, and that wa- that was his goal, and, and we all were trying to go in that direction.
So, you know, I, 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 and I can appreciate them wanting to understand, it's hard to, you know, just turn the information over to a Board, I, I can only speak for myself, but if someone's, you know, just getting minutes of other groups' meetings, it doesn't work for me because I don't have time, I might as well go to the meetings and sit in on them.
Yeah, it needs to summarize.
I need an executive summary of, of each component.
Yeah, that's, that's probably true.
I don't have any one anymore, but yeah, if you saw it, you would say, in a nutshell.
No, I, I can imagine.
Wow, okay.
And, and I think that the sad part of that meeting was that it was kind of embarrassing, different sections of it, it was like, it wasn't the best that Georgetown had to offer.
I thought it was excellent.
You did?
I really thought it was excellent, and I, I think I said that, and I thought, the, the only reason I thought it was excellent was because it seems like unless you have some type of controversy, you have apathy, and no one cares, no one shows up at the meeting, but this, this room was full.
Well, I would say, I would add to, unless you have controversy, unless it directly affects you, if it doesn't directly affect you, in addition to creating apathy, I'd throw that one in.
Those people were angry, I mean, there was anger there in that audience, and, and, you know, I, I thought that that wasn't acceptable. You know, that whole atmosphere wasn't, you don't accomplish too much, and nothing happened, nothing was changed. They didn't vote, the, 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 the town meeting vote is still stands, nothing has changed.
Well, the, the three chairs will get together and figure it out.
I, I think the proof will be in the pudding to that, Tilly, and, um, you know, hopefully it, it will change, and, and I get, I, I, I give the Selectmen, you know, I'm thankful that they did make this effort to try to pull everyone together, um, you know, once, once they let the cat out of the bag in terms of changing on the floor, you know, the, the, with the warrant, at that point, that they have now, you know, uh, tried to pull it together with that meeting and the meetings that they've had, I think is, is, was good, and it was, and I, I personally, I don't mind meetings where people get upset, and I don't mind, um, people having strong feelings, I mean, I, I think that's what the whole public discourse is about, and, um, I, I, what I do get saddened by is when people take it personal, um, and sometimes it is meant personal, and that's not cool, but mo- most of the time it's not, and, um, and that's sad. But for the most part, I thought it was a great rousing meeting with a lot of stuff said and put in.
Is this for everybody?
If there's one woman behind me, she'll be blacking you and say, put your hair down, put your hair down.
But I have a question for you.
Okay, so can we, what I'd like to do is, okay, last one, and then we're gonna move on.
I would really, uh, I didn't get a straight answer at that meeting was, where did this pulling and tugging between the Conservation Board and the Planning Board happen, and I guess I was the only one in the audience to know about it. What, where, why was that worthy of a newspaper article titled that we were at each other's?
I don't know.
No, no explanation.
I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't see the newspaper article, but newspapers have to be a little bit yellow.
Yeah.
To sell papers, right, little yellow journalism sells papers.
Okay.
This is being brought to the Board's attention because of, um, and, and the attorney will come up and, and speak about it. Um, it's, it's, it's more for discussion and, uh, distribution of the information, uh, but it'll be brought up at the next meeting, so. You, you wanna come up and briefly describe?
Why don't we do it at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Well, no, well, I, 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 there was, there was a public comment, well, all right, because we're not gonna adjourn right away, there was a pub, no, there was, uh, Tilly has had an issue on the agenda, right?
Uh, yeah, under member.
Sorry.
There was a member comment.
Sorry, I wasn't here.
So, yep, no worries.
But, but this is just, because it's, it's kind of a thick document, it's just briefly to understand why it's being handed out, it's nothing the Board needs to act on.
We don't need to ask questions, just, just.
Yeah, like a minute summary of what it is.
So this letter describes, um, as part of the original deep forest subdivision that Lisa Lane was a part of, um, there's a, uh, there was a security agreement that it was a result of the original covenant, um, and Lot twenty A, which is now eighteen Lisa Lane, was never released. Um, we think that it was either lost or an oversight, so this packet describes the issue, um, includes all the relevant documents, um.
How many times has the house been bought and sold since?
It's been sold, bought and sold four times since, and, uh, we found it, but, um.
Wow.
So, um, we've just, we're just asking the Board to review the materials, and we'll be appearing at the next meeting on December ninth.
Okay.
To, uh, request the release.
Okay.
And, and.
Thank you.
Yes, it has the name Lisa Lane in it, but it has nothing to do with the terminal subdivision.
Okay, thank you for staying for that.
You're welcome.
Forest, is that, isn't that Bussin Wood?
Yes.
Isn't that an accepted town road?
Yeah.
All right, we'll figure it out.
What? Yeah, this looks like it would need some reading.
Um, okay, so we have Members or Public Report, and Tilly, I, I know you had.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Question that last, from the last meeting.
The local laws.
You had, um, you had asked, and didn't get, didn't get a clear answer.
I, um, and I, and I had sent it email, you did it, huh? You brought the book.
I brought my book.
I was waiting for somebody to bring the book, where's your book?
What is this book? What is this?
You didn't get a book?
Not this book, I got other books, but I didn't get this book. You did not, this was issued in two thousand fourteen, you got one, um, this was, um, I forget who, I forget who our assistant was.
Okay.
Yeah, gotta get with mine.
Mary Ellen, that was it.
Well, for, for all of the notices and all of the responsibilities, I, to be, to be quick about it, I noticed, marked all of the laws that we got, which is all this book, zoning as well as subdivisions, and the A and R in there is everything. Um, when, when, different times, you, you read here, and it says the Board, the Planning Board does this, and the Planning Board does that, and we're not supposed to, uh, be accepting anything until it comes to a meeting, is basically what, like the A and R. Uh, we shouldn't be, uh, collecting it, in my mind, the way I'm reading this, interpreting it, like the Office gets it, and your stamp is saying Planning Board on the date that you use when you get it, but actually, the Board doesn't get it until the scheduled meeting, the next scheduled meeting, and it's on a limit of twenty-one days. So I think, uh, I tried to communicate with other, uh, towns and, and ask them all how they did that, and how they did special permits, and I checked with the state, you know, to verify it, because I wanted to be current, and, um, she sent me, what she uses, and that's basically every, um, every issue to do with the courts, and this would be, where your concern about dates and, and timeframes and whatnot, will be, uh, tested in court if, if you, you know, by chance turn somebody down, they're gonna be looking at this, this is critical.
So, so, excuse me for jumping in right here, but I just wanna see if I'm understanding what you're, what, what we're focusing on, what we're focusing on is the date stamp.
Yeah.
That, that Howard puts on it, gets the clock going.
Right.
And you are questioning if that should be the date?
Yeah, is that, is that the clock date? I, in my opinion, it isn't.
The clock date has always been when it's filed with the town clerk.
But that's wrong also, she told me, it's the Planning Board date, it's when the Planning Board gets it, that's when your clock starts. So, so, you know, you could verify what I'm saying.
So can, can, okay, so.
So anyway.
Where does it say?
In, in.
This.
I, I, I understand this, but this is from two thousand and six.
But she said this is the current, she says, this is, this is what they use.
And I distributed to the Planning Board within the last three months, something done by Copelman and Page that outlined every single application, and the dates in the scheduling of when things come in, how they get processed, how soon you can find a decision, and everything else.
So could, so could we do this then? Could we do this? Could you, to, to, to take this issue, so, uh, what I'm hearing is Tilly's thinking that, that, that she's thinking it's X and.
I, I'm just saying that there's, there's this and something up invited, so going forward, I'll look at what the, the, the two dates and see how they follow together.
See, the A and R is a twenty-one day thing, and that's, that's where we did get a constructive grant.
Yeah, we got in trouble with that one.
That was the only one, but, but what, that's a twenty-one day one.
Right, but we only got in trouble because we were trying to be nice.
But, yeah, but.
We got conned.
But he must have realized that we weren't going that far to prove it, but anyway, that's, that's irrelevant, the issue is that we've gotta be ready for that, because, because, you know, if you want your decisions to hold in court, this is the first thing the, the lawyers look at to dismiss the case, is if you mess up the dates, and I think particularly with the A and R, um, you know, i- if you, if they accept it in the, uh, Planning Board, and, and we don't have a meeting for two weeks, you know, you've already eaten up fourteen days, and, uh.
I thought the Board was operating under the understanding that, uh, there's a certain number of days between when it's processed, and the Planning Board needs to take the matter up, and when that public hearing starts, is, is when, because what I've been doing, and I'll compare what we have to, to what you provided, was we always have this application checklist, and it states the public hearing notice needs to be, uh, within sixty days, and the date that the decision needs to be done within the public hearing started, and it's all been lined out, so I will take this and, and compare it against, uh.
And could we, and so could we, yeah, and so for the next available agenda for you.
Yeah, I got a couple.
Not, not, um.
It won't be till January, so.
So, so the next available agenda for you, could you address this issue in the way you're talking about, and how to be part of our packet?
And, and also, yeah, and, and also.
A and Rs are a special case.
Yeah, they are.
Very, very special.
But the other, the other thing is about the, the case, uh, about a budding prop, uh, towns, uh, if we get an application, as we did, for budding towns.
So, are we switching, I'm just trying to keep up with you, are we switching gears onto another issue here?
Yes, that's the same, it's same kind of a process, that we have to follow the laws, and, um.
I thought this was.
There too, it says Planning Board, Planning Board does the notices, Planning Board does the legal ad, Planning Board, uh, does the, uh, takes it down to the, to the clerk and stamps, uh, and I can tell you, it's not required for us to have a rules of procedure, but many, many Boards do, to make it simpler for everybody, but like North Andover, uh, in sending out, uh, notices, they require through their application, there you can have that, um, their application process to, uh, have the applicant fill out envelopes of the, a butter list, they get in a butter list, the applicant does, and the Office, uh, will get the envelopes from them, and the postage, uh, is tr- assessed as you get the, um, list and send it out, and all they do is fold, the, the Office folds the legal ad and puts them in the envelope with the postage, and it's gone, they mail it, to make sure that it's done.
I'm sure they're verifying against the, the certified butters.
You usually have to do that the last minute in case there's a change, since they print it out and somebody bought property in that short frame of, uh, time, so they check it at the very last minute, and.
So what, so what is, so, um, so help me understand, what, 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 I, I understand you're talking about the butters and the notification, but what about the butters and notification? Are we doing something that's not correct?
Uh, what are we doing? Evidently with the, the, the last one, the applicant is doing it, is that correct? I don't know what your process is telling the truth.
Well, Tilly, uh, I think you do, cause we have talked about it, and, and what happens is that, and, and we've agreed upon the, the, Georgetown has the allowance that if the notice goes out by the applicant, it's sent out by green card, if it's sent out by the Planning Office, then it goes out in a Planning Office envelope, and we get reimbursed for the postage.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, by assuring that the, uh, the, the, the addresses and the, the folks that are mailed are on that a butter list.
And that a butters list is of course certified by.
If you leave it to the applicant to do, and they just so happen to leave one off, and no one gets, does seize that on your butter list.
Right, it's, it could happen.
Right, it's less likely to happen if the Planning Office is the initiator of the mail.
Right.
The one thing I like about this, though, is that it takes up less of, uh, uh, I presume Andrea's time.
Everybody's time, sure.
To do the envelopes, I assume that that's a, a fairly time-intensive activity.
There, 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 there are, there are a number of towns that what they do is, they, they put as much of the onus on the applicant as possible, um, for their time and their money to, to file the application, and in terms of notifications, what they often do is, that is the requirement, um, and.
Which one?
It is the requirement of the applicant to.
Does the, all the mailing.
All the mailings and gets the green cards, and, um, then it's up to the applicant to provide the documentation to the town clerk, whoever pulls it in for the town, and it, there's this checklist that the town planner has for what everything that's due, and where it says, um, a butters, a butters list, you know, it's up to checking the butters list. Uh, who provides the list?
Assessor's office.
Assessor's office, so it's, it, then basically, it's, that's where the check happens, and if the applicant has not notified in a butter, the clock does not start until, and this goes back to, the clock doesn't start ticking until the application is complete. It's not just about filing an application, it's about a complete application.
Complete application, and that's why it should come to the Board after, if they wanna go to your office, like even a preliminary, that preliminary that we got. Now, that one was dated.
But it has to be in the ordinance, it has to be fairly stated.
It's already in the newspaper, cause it has to be in the newspaper two weeks prior.
It has to be in the newspaper, okay.
And it can't be mailed more than ten days prior, according to that.
No, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, a project isn't even a project yet until the application is complete.
Yeah.
It's not, it is, it doesn't even.
Oh, absolutely.
And so nothing is in the newspaper yet.
Right, not, yeah, yeah, the clock doesn't start ticking until.
It's like the world doesn't.
No, but according to the law, it's when the Planning Board gets it, and he's, he's the Office, he's not the Board. Everything that's done, if you want the applicant to do all of this process of mailings and legal ad, whatever, it's still our responsibility. The law says the Planning Board, the Special Permitting Authority.
Well, even our, even our regs, regs say that, I mean, things have to be brought to.
I mean, that's what, that's what Howard, that's another issue, I mean, but that's what Howard's job is, is to, is to do that work on behalf of the Planning Board.
Yeah.
Versus coming to.
When you get a stamp, okay, the applicant will get a stamp, like, like, I think I have this one right in my hand, it's stamped Planning Board, and I think that was stamped October twenty-third, now I looked at that, and I says, that was on a Friday. Were, were you here on a Friday, October twenty?
Sometimes I work Fridays.
And you accepted it on Friday, and, and for the preliminary.
Was, are we sure it was a Friday, cause it was stamped the twenty-third by the court too?
I know, that's what I was curious about, what's going on, so I think that if, if we, whatever we agree to by law, it has to be, it should be stamped the, when we get the application in, by us, now if he's not there, or the office is closed, and this person thinks they can go down to the town clerk, and they should, they'll accept it, that's not legal until the Board gets it.
Okay, so, so, so we have a second issue now, which is about this, the stamping of when disinformation is submitted, which is really opening up a big, also a larger discussion as far as, like, I'm concerned. Help me, how, as a Board, how do we wanna, we only have so much time. Howard only has so much time.
Right.
Andrea only has so much time, um, how do you guys, how does this Board wanna handle Members bringing to the Board concerns that they have about how the Board, you know, is, is functioning? How, how do we wanna handle?
Well, I'll, I'll offer something up, Rob, if, if they come right to the Board. Well, I'll, I'll offer something up, Rob, if, if they come right to the Board, that's. And, until you're saying everyone comes to the Board, that's when it starts, but it may be coming to the Board and be incomplete.
We're not gonna accept it.
Right, we'd have, we'd have to look through the application. Every application has.
Then you're gonna hand it to me, I'll just see if it's complete. And then what am I gonna then do, come and give it back to the Board?
We, we miscommunicated, or I miss, I misspoke somehow, what I was getting at wasn't, I wasn't talking about the timestamp anymore. I was talking about just the issue when any Board member has an issue or a question with regards to how the Board is operating.
Isn't that what that section in our agenda is all about? Just like Tilly's doing.
But I think what your point is, is if this is gonna take a, a, an hour, we need to schedule an hour to talk about this and not tack it on at the end of a meeting, is that what you're?
Somehow we need to get a handle on it, we need to have a limit to it, we need to have, um, yeah, there needs, so that we all understand. So he's not overloaded, so that we're not overloaded, um, and uh, that we.
And everything works as smoothly as we could get it.
And we can only pick away at things slowly.
I mean, I, I would suggest that maybe once a quarter, we set aside a, you know, a, a meeting with a, a, a small agenda and. Do housekeeping issues on that, on that meeting like that.
I, I just like, I've been on this Board almost ten years now, and with the exception that single A and R, where this Board was being sympathetic. And trying to work with the applicant.
I know what you're going to say.
That was the only straw.
But that was because, like I was saying.
And what I'd like to, I'd like to kinda end this conversation, cause we're not gonna solve it tonight.
Well, I think that in my mind does solve it.
It does for you. It does for you.
I think we've been doing it right.
And, and I'm not agreeing nor disagreeing, but I, I'm hearing Tilly say she's got questions about it, and so I'm trying to, you know.
I understand, but my, is my fifteen minutes taken up already?
It was, it was five on.
Let me just say what Harry is saying, yes, yes, so far we haven't, we haven't turned down any, now keep that in mind. When you look, the, when the Board looks like they're not gonna go with whatever the applicant requests. That's when they're not gonna, they don't want a denial, they're gonna look for flaws in the process. To, if, to appeal it.
No, they're gonna say, I'll bring you more information, can we wait, and we have to just. Resolve that. We need to deny. Period, done.
We need more, well, that was the issue with this, remember?
They said that they were going to bring us more information.
But to Tilly's point, to be fair, we don't know when the twenty-one day starts, it, it sounds like what she's saying is that perhaps when it's stamped. In the very first instance, that starts the twenty-one days, and what.
It's been my understanding that for an A and R, the twenty-one days, it starts when the town clerk processes it.
So, so let's, so, so that's the issue. So that's the issue, so we have, we have two issues, we have.
Let's have Tom Conville answer that and bring it back in the next meeting.
Well, yeah, also I request that you read section eleven of this book.
Chapter forty-eight, section eleven.
Forty-eight, and it gives you the, what I'm saying about notices and whatnot, and it's, it's very clear. That's why they need lawyers to interpret it.
So just so, so we don't, um, so on the next available agenda, under, um. Under uh.
It'll be under planning.
And we'll, we'll pick up one of these items.
In, in January.
And let's start a list that's going to, let's talk about this again, that maybe once a quarter, we have a meeting that's light. We have a bigger chunk of talk in these when they start piling up.
And the whole purpose is, is just to make the process smoother and cover our bases.
Can I ask you a question?
It has nothing, uh, uh, when are we doing the groundwater hearing?
That, that's the, in January.
It's in January?
In January, it's in January.
And I just have one quick question, when an applicant comes in and says, where do I go, what do I do, is there a checklist for them at this point? Okay, could I?
There, there's a development review guidebook that you should have gotten when, when you came on.
So that, that's the checklist in development.
It's a count, it's oversimplified, it's a flow chart, you got this type of thing, this is where you.
And that's what's provided to the applicant?
I, I, I don't always provide it, but when they come in and said, what do I need to do?
That's what you would give to them?
Eh, I, I go through it with them, sometimes they request a copy of it, sometimes they don't.
But it's online.
I appreciate that it's online, what I'm wondering is, if I was pretending to be an applicant, that's what I would get if I came to you and said, I, I, I don't know where to start. What do I, what do I do, and that's what you would hand me, and said, no.
With the applicant comes into the Planning Office. And says, this is what I'd like to do, what do I need to do? We sit down and we evaluate it, is this a planning, a zoning, whatever, it, it may be, it may be just for a building permit. There's referral to the, uh, or in a meeting with the building inspector, there's also the zoning board enforcement officer. If it ends up being a land use, uh, application that's under the purview and permitting of the Planning Board. Pull out the development review guidebook, through what the process needs to be done, what the expectations are, things like that. If it's something that's gonna go to the zoning board or Conservation Commission, I advise them of, of the process that's in the guidebook. And then if they want, then I give them a copy of, of the guidebook. Every applicant that comes in, I don't hand them the guidebook and say, here you go, this will explain it all.
That's where you see that, applicants who have been through this before, their packages, which. Their packages come to us, and they're, they're so well organized, and anybody can pick it up, and you realize they have hit every item necessary, and it's in order. And people who are doing this for the first time, or it's not, this is where you get these, and it's really hard to figure out.
So that's what I'm, I guess we would call on my list, is, is that would that be helpful to develop such a checklist? So that we can hand that to everyone that walks in, so that we don't end up with some of the applicants that we've had that have been. Even in my limited experience so far, have been less prepared for this than.
Well, and I think that checklist, it, I, we used to have a checklist a long time ago, I don't know if you remember it, Harry, but we used to have a checklist a long time ago. And, but it wasn't used to the next level, which was that checklist is also this timestamp. The project does not get stamped until it is accepted, and it's only accepted when it's completed application. And the owner can tell a completed application, cause every box is checked off. So that's all really good stuff.
And that list was created from our bylaw, from our, from our regs, from our regs.
The, the, that's where it starts, the bylaw outlines it in, in a little bit more of a lengthy way, what the expectations are. When they file or one, okay, I need to do a site plan application, they get a site plan application, the last page is, is the, of one through. Twenty-one, of North Arrow, scale, sheet size, and all that, so.
Reg from our regs.
I appreciate that it's from the regs, I know. But nor, should we, I don't necessarily think we should ask an app- applicant to understand every aspect of our regs, I think it should be a. I've done this, or I haven't done this, and if I haven't, then I need to go back and do it, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at.
These towns have different kinds of applications, so even if you are a, an experienced developer. Every town is different in their application process, the law is the same, and it, and it, the state planner that I talked to, Elaine. She says, we haven't changed this for fifty years, she says, this is the law, and anybody who files. She gave me that paper, anyone who goes to court has to follow the same guideline.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn, seconded, all approved, all in favor, I say aye, aye. Alright, thank you, everybody.